Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, where we second twenty twenty five calls being called in Borough Council. You have the cell phones, you see silence, they just did mine, I appreciate that. Uh, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mayor Chachi, here. President Prokopio.
Present.
Councilwoman Blood.
Here.
Councilman Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Present.
Councilwoman Lambert.
Present.
One line. A zoomed, yes, Councilwoman Smythe.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Present.
Uh, we'll go to reports to the board of our officers, uh, Mayor Chachi.
Okay.
What do you have for us today?
So, I have a number of things, none of which are final. Um, I think hopefully in the coming two weeks, we can finalize some of these things so that you guys can vote on them. So, the first thing I want to talk about, let me bring up the correct, um, notes, uh, we're looking at leaving our co- leaving Comcast and moving to other services. So, what we currently have with Comcast is our internet, we have a package for three different locations. Our internet, our voice, and our cable TV services. At the pool, obviously, we just have internet. I think you were asking me, Scott, if the pool doesn't have TV, it just has internet.
Yeah, why do we have TV in the first place?
So, we're not going, this is what, I'm going to get into that.
TV where?
It's a historical.
Well, on the three documents that he provided, the, the municipal building, this building, you had.
Well, you have it here because this was the emergency.
Joe.
Those are, so, what we have today is, at, uh, the, the two locations, this building and the municipal building, we have, um, TV and internet. And of course, at the municipal building, we also have voice. At the Alden Swim Club, we only have internet. And we have that internet because of the security, excuse me, security cameras. Okay. What, so, what we're looking to do here, the, the original motivation is because we think we can save money on the internet by going to Verizon and we'll get much better bandwidth, that's particularly upload speed. Because, you know, and which we use with our, right now, with Zoom, with our security cameras, all that stuff. It's not just like, um, like when we're at home, we almost always, or just frequently using download, unless you're doing a, you know, Facebook call or something. So, um, I shared with you, I didn't print, but I shared with you all in an email, between Comcast bills. So Comcast sends its bills separately for each location. So you have one for the pool, you have one for this building, and you have one for the municipal building. Um, in, in addition, in that same, um, email, I attached, well, actually, in the email below, I引用 a quote from Verizon, only for internet. Okay? I'll explain the other stuff, but, so, looking at the quotes for internet, what you're going to see is the community center and the Alden Swim Club are the same prices at each speed level. However, the, at the municipal building, it's, it's more expensive because it includes the cost of static IP address. Static IP addresses, without getting into the technical stuff, is basically required so that we can have that firewall device to block people from reaching our network. Okay? So I just want to make that clear, when you're looking at that email, you're going to see the three locations, the municipal building is more expensive for that reason. Okay? Now, that only is talking, of course, about the internet service. So it's not talking about voice and TV. What we're probably going to do is, buy, buy, cut the cord, as they say, as the kids are doing today. We're going to probably just get rid of cable TV. Um, and we can probably have, uh, a device or use YouTube TV, there's a, there's a thing. And it's, it's cheaper than cable TV. Um, and, you know, we could do it as needed. You know what I mean, you could do it for some months and then it doesn't cause such, you know, drama. Like if you change your cable TV, that changes all the, the numbers with the other things you get from the, um, providers. So, the last thing that needs to, well, there's one other little thing that I'll just mention now. We also get our Comcast, uh, our Microsoft three sixty-five email addresses and word and all that jazz. That's through Comcast, so we'll just have to transfer that. Um, I'm relying on GoTo to figure out how to transfer.
That's going to be additional costs.
So.
Beyond what's quoted in the quotes that we got from Verizon.
So, the, the, the Microsoft three sixty-five should be the same, because that's really just a pass through thing from that Comcast charges us, as, and Verizon, it should be the same, whether we'll go to Verizon or if we're somehow able to go directly from Microsoft. I expect there to be some, um, cost from GoTo for this whole transfer, because specifically and especially for the voice transfer. So let's talk about the voice services. Currently, we have a very old, in terms of devices, probably fifteen years old switch, lo- even older, probably.
Probably twenty years old.
Probably twenty years old switch, which, as you know, is like ancient Sony terms when it comes to computers and stuff. This is what the, um, Comcast voice comes into the municipal building and connects to this device. No one expects this device to survive if it's turned off for the building expansion. Okay? And, and certainly, it likely wouldn't be compatible with anything that we would get from Verizon. Uh, John and I met with GoTo and they provided us with a quote for three different hosted, uh, voice services. Hosted voice services, I don't know if you guys remember Vonage and Magic Jack. That's where basically you get your landline through your internet. Okay? Like that was, you know, a consumer product for people, you know, to have. Like actually, I have a home number and my home number is a Magic Jack number. I actually don't even have anything connected to it, I just use it as a voicemail number. And then I have an app on my phone that I can use to mimic. So that's a hosted, um, service. They were pricier than what we're getting now from Comcast. Okay? So, John is in the process, am I saying the wrong thing?
Nope.
Of trying to get us a, because as John said, he wants to pick up the phone and hear a dial tone and then be able to press a bunch of numbers and hear someone talk to him and then give him. We don't need anything fancy, and of course, I agree, this isn't, we're not looking for, um, something over the top. So, John and I think Dan are going to be, I think you have a meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning.
Great. And what, what's that meeting with? Con- Verizon?
No, it's an outside company, another company.
Is it a hosted thing?
So.
Kind of like what they, what they quoted us, I mean.
It's the same company who put the hike uses.
Okay.
When they did their renovation to their new building.
Yeah. Great.
Their system wouldn't have survived either.
Okay.
Going to the new building, et cetera, so.
Okay, okay.
Uh, and I called over there and they're extremely happy with what they have, no problems at all.
Great, okay. So hopefully, please be on the lookout for emails, because I'm hoping that in the next two weeks, you, we will be able to give you, here's the really hard quotes that are like, right now, you have the quotes just for the internet service, services. But you also need quotes for, I mean, I can give, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not worried about TV right now, I mean, we can figure that at some point. There's still, you know, there's all sorts of different packages, uh, YouTube, like I said.
That's what I have, YouTube, I have no problem with.
And you have, and you can watch sports and like that matters for, you can watch anything, right?
It's hundred channels, it's the cheapest one.
How much is it a month?
Sixty-nine bucks.
Right, so that's really cheap. So, that's something we can look at, but we're probably not going to worry about that for this. What, what we're going to hopefully get you is the quote for the ISP, which you already have, and the voice. And I'll get clarification about the Microsoft account. Okay? So that's, that needs to happen soon. Additionally, the other thing, yeah.
Two other questions.
Sure.
Uh, is the chief, are you on board with the changes that need, going to be made in terms of phone service for you and the police department?
We're going to find out tomorrow.
Well, it's, 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 it has to be briefed, so.
But he's coming tomorrow, I'm ready.
And what's, not only is GoTo going to charge us, but I see a one-time only charge of basically fifty bucks for each of these buildings.
Right.
From Verizon as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Because you know how it is with some of these things.
Absolutely, and I know Old Eagle Eyes here is going to see it, so that's, I appreciate that.
We've got a question, well. Why, why do we need like a streaming service, you know, like YouTube TV or something like that?
Why do we need TVs, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, basically.
So when something happens of a catastrophe, the chief and I would like to be able to see it on TV. Plus this, this is also an emergency shelter. So if something happens where we send somebody here with kids, the last thing we want.
We don't want to turn it to Lord of the Flies, like right away.
Don't watch TV in the back.
Right away.
Right, right. That's why the TV's in the back room.
Okay, okay, so, so, I, 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 I mean, yeah, so we need more than three six ten, you know.
Not really.
What, what, what we.
If we stream.
Not, not, no, but we can get it over the air and buy an antenna. I get it.
No, we're, we're streaming.
We could, I mean. I have an antenna for you.
Like you're.
Buddy, we got one.
Come on.
I have an antenna.
I get terrific.
We're, we're not up in the hills, we want to keep these kids happy.
We're not, we're not.
If they're here for the, you know, extended amount of time, which has happened in the past. It happened during our first year in office where we had a fire or.
We were.
Oh, that, 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 yeah, like there, Brian Albert.
We had to evacuate homes because of the gas and fire company and they, they were people in here, so there was something for the youngsters to do.
Correct.
I think Mr. Feinberg, does anyone have any questions?
No.
Uh, Mr. Feinberg have a question?
Yes.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, with the voiceover, uh, VOIPs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if the electricity goes off, if there's an emergency, don't you lose that service?
I think you do.
So.
I think you do.
Wait, I, I know that landlines.
Everyone has a cell phone, right?
Yeah.
And, okay, actually, to that point, and that was the thing that GoTo was telling us on with hosted, is you could set it up to an automatically call over to a cell phone.
Okay. So I know that landlines, the one thing it had was advantages if, if you lose electricity, uh, the landline's independent.
Right.
We have a generator.
You do have it, oh, okay.
Oh, we have most here.
And that's why we have one here.
Sue wouldn't allow us to proceed with this meeting if there weren't generators here, so.
She's emergency lady.
Yeah.
I have a flashlight on my purse, so we're okay.
You're always prepared, you are the original, you are the inspiration.
Where does she, uh, she's coordinator, I'm glad she's prepared.
All right, last topic.
What's your second?
Last topic is police reporting system. So we have a, as you guys recall, we have the original server, what is it called? The INAX server? That was in World War Two. We have that, that's what our server is, okay? So we need to get rid of that server.
Giving a good chuckle out there.
You know that server. So we need to get rid of the server that we have, it's older than the hills, God bless it.
Would it run out of vacuum tubes?
It's, 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 we're, it's running out quickly of the vacuum tube. So, um, we're going to say farewell to that server, we're not going to get another server because we're going to go to the cloud, right?
Which is actually a physical server at somebody else's location.
And someone else's location, pretty much, or collective servers, or, or virtual servers. So anyway, we did get a, a quote of for eleven, what is it, chief, eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand five hundred eighty-eight thirty-one cents.
At thirty-one cents.
That's per year?
Per year.
Yeah, that would be the first year and then our service fee every year after that. And from what I've gotten from the company is that, uh, they usually do a slight increase about every five years for service, but.
And if I remember correctly, we actually looked at three different proposals, this was one of them. It was not your favorite one at the time. There was a really super expensive one, there was one that was more middle ground, it seemed to be where we were going. However, they can't take care of it, as you told us, until the end of twenty twenty-four.
In the fourth quarter of twenty twenty.
And.
Right.
And this is, this is cheaper. Some of your questions, it is then when they really quoted us, but your, some of your reservations have been assuaged, as it were, over time?
Yeah, yeah, some of my concerns were addressed by other departments, um, that, that had gone through this system in our county. They were pretty much told that, that those, those concerns are going to be worked on. Um, so hopefully there'll be some changes to that, so.
And this will be our host for our municipal stuff as well, or just for the police reporting?
Just for the police.
Where's our municipal stuff?
So you were asking about cloud, that's, that's part of our Microsoft.
Okay.
Accounts. So, uh, just, just as a rec, to recall, what we, when we were originally looking at the options.
Yes.
Back, I don't know, several months ago.
Yeah.
Uh, the one that we were looking at very seriously was Cody Pathfinder. And that was going to be forty-six thousand dollars, forty-seven thousand dollars, uh, first year and then nine thousand five hundred subsequent years. So, obviously, for the subsequent years, it's a little higher, but it's so much lower, it would take many years.
Like a lease on a, the, the police.
Correct.
But, and, and they were going to split that originally over two years.
They, that was their plan.
It's going to be twenty-five or twenty-six thousand.
Sixty forty with Cody Pathfinder.
Sixty forty split, sixty, sixty percent.
Is there, other than the eleven, there's no additional charge to switch to them, or is it?
Um, the only, not for this company, the only other, um, issue that, that may come with some sort of financial, um, to it is with our current system, visual alert, if there is going to be any sort of charge with the switch over.
Yeah.
Um.
On the part of visual, on a part of.
Part of visual alert. Um, I still have to find that part out.
Right.
Um, but as far as this company, that is it, that is it, that's including on their end, the data migration, uh, and everything.
Correct. The chief, so you're saying you're not sure if, if, um, this is the quote for where we're going, and that's solid. We don't know what is going to be.
Visual alert, if they're going to charge us to decommission us or something.
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
That, that's one thing that I'm trying to hear back from them.
Okay.
And I haven't gotten anything back yet.
We'd appreciate if we could, we'd love to do all this at our next meeting, so if you can come up with a solid number, that would be good.
Again, so we're going to be sending stuff through email and hopefully have it so that you guys can vote at the next meeting. Um.
And we've actually budgeted for this, by the way.
We certainly did.
Very good.
We did.
At a slightly higher rate than what you're talking.
That is correct. Additionally, there is, just, oh, so I want to be just completely transparent, there will be costs with GoTo to support, um, probably not, they will, not for this, because they're not going to be involved in the reporting system. But I expect there to be a cost for GoTo to support us migrating to Verizon and Comcast and helping the setup of the system, because we're going to need.
Do we get that number from them?
We don't have that number at all, we haven't even, that's something we really need to have them give us a quote for then helping, working with that and talking about, well, that's, we're looking at email. In other words, we need, we need them to consult with that and make sure that everything's as they're said.
Well, one thing I, if I can add.
Yeah.
With this.
We may need, yeah.
That, uh, this computer square inch buys that the only thing that they would need to be, um, access to the IP address for, for our system to input, um, and somebody with the administrator, uh, access to access our system.
You're talking about visual alert, accessing visual alert?
No, accessing our system, so they, when we go, if we go to this system, you see RMS, this company advises, all they need is access to the IP address. Um, I had mentioned about our IT company.
Yeah.
And those all that.
They can talk.
Um, right, that they would, so I don't know.
We have five static IP addresses.
Right.
That's like the minimum you can get.
So I don't know what, you may want to talk to GoTo.
Yeah.
And see if that would be an additional cost on their end, with their coordination with computer squares.
Maybe I could admit having this conversation with that, that, that would be very helpful, yeah. With, um, central, with the info share people, whatever, whatever. Here's where computers were, they wanted to set, yeah. Maybe I could talk to them, because that way, that feel like GoTo, you know, not that they nickel, but, you know, you know, they charge.
Yeah, they just would have to have, they would have access into our system. And with, with our security system now, with our, with our service. They would have to be, have access, and I don't know.
There are going to be significant coordination before we go to a computer square. I think there's going to be, and we may need to pay Stephen G to, because, to, I, I, I don't know, does GoTo oversee that server, I mean, I know they control the servers.
I mean, they, they control the security.
On the server.
On the server.
Yeah, okay, then it was private, yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's what I'm saying.
So we'll, we'll have them, we'll have that.
And I would, I would think that would be very limited, their, right, their requirements, that, that.
Right, I agree.
For computer square inch to have access.
Correct.
Um. Going back to the, the, uh, migration over, sort of provides, it's like we have, you mentioned the three sixty-five. Is the Comcast, in, in a lot of cases, the whole package that we had can be just fully transferred over and you wouldn't have to involve GoTo, not, not for the police department, that would be separate, but for the municipal. Yeah, you, it should all be somewhat included.
Yeah.
Maybe a line item in there.
Right.
But we shouldn't have to hire GoTo to do the stuff.
No, I agree, it's.
Our eyes and already share.
I, I think it's more, it's more of a billing thing.
Yeah.
I think, in other words, I, to be honest, I just thought we were, we were, um, getting built from Microsoft. But then I noticed on our SharePoint site, the URL is Comcast business, so like, so I think, um, I asked them about that and I haven't gotten a clearance on that, that's going to work, but, but not figure it out.
All right, good. You have a couple of ten days, twelve days to do this.
Yep, yep, and I think, Mr. President, um, I think that completes my report.
Thank you very much for your, your work on this effort. Any questions for the mayor on this? Seeing none, moving on, Borough Manager, Mr. Roy.
Thanks, Jim.
Yes.
Okay. President.
They're coming.
That'll be much quicker than this. So everybody knows you have your statements of financial interest in front of you, please have it back in the next two, two months, I mean, it's too much. And get a quick update on where we are with our new building expansion. Footings are all poured, slab is also poured. Uh, we are probably going to start the framing sometime next week. We are waiting on results from the cylinder break test, just to make sure the concrete is hard enough so we can start building walls and put roofs, et cetera. Uh, and that's really all I have.
You.
Uh.
Yeah. Do you want to share with them, or should I, about where we stand, why it's hadn't started already? The init, this, the initial seven day.
Yeah, because of vacation.
Well, that's part, part of it is that, but the initial seven day test, uh, Mr. Tartaglia.
Came back.
Came back below the level that you would like to see on a first.
Well, it's pretty good where it would be after seven days, but typically at twenty-eight, it's fully cured and we're actually going to be Monday, it'd be somewhere around thirty-two. But until we get the results, we're kind of just in the holding.
The, the wood has all been sent there.
It's there, sitting there.
Framing.
They were here ready to go and they were sent home because we didn't get the results we wanted. And the company who's doing the testing is actually on vacation until tomorrow. So.
Must be nice.
Honestly, if, we probably lost a week because everyone else was on vacation, so.
Right now, that's true. Uh, anything else, Mr. Roy, there's nothing else, any questions for the Borough Manager?
Um, just one, and what would you follow up with, the highway? I did mention the building, or did see the building we see on East, uh, Wayne. Do they plan on stripping split in half tomorrow or next week?
Oh, who knows?
They helped out me.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that question.
They've given me a PA one call two times, so.
Well, you mentioned it in December.
Oh, I mentioned it twice in December, yes.
So they're, they're, they, they are at least talking about doing it.
No, they're going to do it probably, the machine's there now.
We'll do it in the snowstorm tomorrow.
Right, that, I'm, no, not, no, Monday, they're only going to do it on Monday.
If it's fine, it's that the machine is there, machines are ready to start.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But again, just so everybody knows, yes, there is a blacktop company that's still opening, or it's open all year long.
All year.
Will not be any problems with the head blacktop, because they do tri-axles at a time, so it will be hot enough.
Now, 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 I'm just wondering, you know, if it's, if the substrate is frozen and you put the hot blacktop on there, would that be an issue?
Sounds like we have the science figured out.
You know what, I'll ask them, I'll, I'll tell them.
Delay, delay.
It's a reasonable question, buddy.
No, no.
I, I don't think it's their first time doing it in the winter.
That's true. Okay, now, yeah, because, you know, I drove through there and it saw the yellow stripe for the gas lines, words, guys were cutting curbs and stuff like that, and, so.
You will see somebody doing concrete work there tomorrow, if you go by. That's all the, um, blacktop, um, sidewalks, we'll take them up, put them in with concrete starting tomorrow.
Uh, any other questions for the Borough Manager? Thank you very much, seeing none. Mr. Emuso, I'm pleased, sir, yeah, I think you should address your situation with our, uh, now not being held zoning hearing. Mr. Tartaglia is on the line to.
Oh, great.
Additional, you there, Mr. Tartaglia?
I am.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, this is awesome, Tony.
I will, first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for working over the course of the holidays, in and out, back and forth to handle this, because, uh, the timing was getting tight in terms of having to advertise and having a meeting, but, go ahead.
Sure. So, uh, I had some concerns, um, about, uh, a company called Holcomb Associates that bought the apartment building at two twenty North Woodlawn Avenue and their operations they were going to have there, based on some initial information we had, I was concerned that it would be what we call in our zoning, uh, called a criminal treatment center, which is not permitted in that residential district. Uh, so, I talked to Mr. Tartaglia and, uh, based on my advice, he issued a letter saying, you, you can't do what you want to do at this location unless you get a variance on the zoning hearing board. So they, uh, filed a zoning hearing board, uh, application and we had a meeting scheduled, the zoning hearing board for January thirteenth. But in the meantime, I worked with the attorney for, it's called Holcomb, um, and to maybe address the borough's concerns. Uh, and, and we were able to do that, and honestly, um, I've been through a lot of these situations with, with what we call blue homes. It can be very difficult to, uh, you know, restrict and manage these situations, and I think we got an excellent result, you know, hopefully for both sides, and so for the borough. Um, so, Times, Holcomb, I think it's all one entity, they provided us with two documents, I think, is available for the public. Um, one is, they really are going to restrict, uh, who can live at this location. Um, you know, this is, this is a, this is a mental health facility, which is certainly, uh, something that's important. Um, but they're, all their referrals are only going to come from the Delaware County Office of Behavioral Health. So that was significant, I think.
Very significant.
There were some concerns initially that they were going to get referrals from, you know, the Delaware County probation department, the Delaware County prison system, um, none of it, it's, it's all coming through the, uh, Delaware County Office of Behavioral Health. Uh, beyond that, though, even when they come through the Office of Behavioral Health, if they have any of a wide range of criminal convictions ever, they aren't going to live there, to include, uh, simple assault. And, and that was significant, because that's a misdemeanor. So, uh, uh, candidly, this building just, I think, became the, the safest building, um, in, in Alden.
In all of Alden.
Uh, simply because, you know, they were willing to, to restrict any felony convictions. Um, but, but, you know, we talked to them and they, they went ahead and said, any, any crime of violence, including simple assault. So even the lowest level misdemeanor of simple assault, if you have a conviction of that, you cannot live in this building. Um, they understood our police nuisance ordinance and, uh, certainly will comply with that. Um, kind of the, there are two key issues that makes something a criminal treatment center. One, that they are taking people directly from the criminal justice system, and two, that they are providing, in fact, some kind of medical treatment. Um, so we got their assurance that no one's coming from the criminal justice system and then, as you can see from this adestation, no medical procedures will be performed, um, at this complex. And we put the burden on them to notify us if there are any changes to this adestation. And then, uh, finally, they, they understand that, look, you know, based on what they have assured us, um, you know, I was able to take a second look at that and say, well, if all of this is true, that this is in fact not a criminal treatment center. And I advised Mr. Tartaglia the same, and again, based on my advice, he, uh, he issued them a, a use and occupancy permit, they had to fix some cement, which they did. Um, but we made it very clear, this use and occupancy is, is based on the adestation. And if anything changes, we have all our enforcement procedures that they, that we can exercise. So, uh, because of that, it's no longer a criminal treatment center, and it's, again, probably one of the safer buildings in town. Um, Mr. Tartaglia issued the UNO, because he issued the UNO, they withdrew their appeal, there was nothing left for them to appeal, so, uh, thus ended the, uh, the zoning hearing board meeting. But I think it, really an excellent result, again, I've been through these quite a bit. Um, and there's a lot of federal case law that's appropriately so, very protective of people. And look, everybody has a right to to live. Everyone has a right to to have a home and look. Oh, it's a great place, so I understand why people want to be here. Um, but we were able to really get some significant uh assurances from the company and I I feel very good about the result. So it'll be a safe operation, nobody from the criminal justice system, nobody with any criminal record. Um, and if anything that changes, they'll have to let us know.
Before you go on, Mr. Tartaglia, would you like to add anything to that description of how things went?
No, I think that was very accurate. Um. I mean, once we sat down and talked and listened to what they had to say. Um, I was then convinced that this was not a criminal treatment center as defined in our zoning ordinance. So um with the assurances from our solicitor, I had no problem issuing the occupancy as an apartment building.
And they have twenty four units in there, as I know, and they they have uh completed all of their uh, I think you've done all your inspections for the concrete and other work that they have gotten permits for. Is there anything else that's pending on that at the moment?
They have talked about replacing the roof, but they have not obtained permits for that yet. They've talked about possibly upgrading some of the interiors of the apartments, but we have not seen any applications for that yet either.
And uh when will you be going in for the annual apartment inspection program uh as it now stands? Do you do you know that? Or where where are we with that in terms of inspection?
Hang on one second. Let me see what we go to the calendar.
And while you're doing that, my memory was they were planning on beginning to move people in in March uh from our conversation that we had back in September with them.
I that's my recollection, yeah.
Is that still the planned timeline?
I don't know the answer to that question.
No one knows at this point.
Okay. But with this UNO, that they can move in at their um discretion?
They can. The annual inspection will come up in May of this year.
Okay. Sounds good. And of course, any other work that they did, which it was pretty extensive externally so far, they'll come through and have to be processed by us in order to do that.
That is correct, yes.
All right. Is there anything else that you have to add to that, or that's the sum total of your report tonight?
I I click your background. I don't know. People can't see it. He's loading out his face.
Yeah.
Terrific, here.
Loading heads.
Again, I thank you and I thank uh I thank Peter for uh working over the course of the right before and after Christmas in order to dissolve all this, and I appreciate that. Uh, as well as, and of course, this was all communicated to the zoning hearing board solicitor.
Yes.
And the zoning hearing board members, who are going to be speaking in a minute, I'm sure. Uh, anything else you have uh to report this evening?
No, I don't know if we're gonna have an executive session.
Uh, I don't think we're not at that point. There are some legal matters, but we're not. Uh, we just, anything that we discussed in executive session is still pending for the rest of council. We don't have anything else further to submit. This was the one thing that was the most pressing. Uh, any questions from council regarding this? Can I have one?
I'm just curious, what is an R two?
What is what?
R two?
That's what.
Was there a request? No, it's not a zoning district. They're they're asking about what an R two residential apartment building is.
So, under uh under the building code, there are various classifications of how people live, R one through R four. R three is probably your most common. That's your single family dwelling. Um, R ones would be those who are mostly transient in nature, hotels, motels, things of that nature. R two is going to be an apartment house where people are somewhat permanent. R four is going to be institutionalized. And that's where you would put a criminal treatment center, if you're gonna put one. So R two refers to the designation of the building code for apartment houses uh and dwellings where m- more than two in a building, where the residents are somewhat permanent in nature.
Thank you.
Not to be confused with the fact that this this building is in an R four zoning district in Delaware County and Alden Borough. That's where I saw that. So the people that are here and it's available at the building, there's we have a letter from Mr. Tartaglia withdrawing his objection and then the two uh uh at the adaptation and the signed letter as referred to by our solicitor, which are all public documents and they'll be held under that. Any other questions from council? Mr. Feinberg, uh, for those that aren't aware, he is an alternate member of the zoning hearing board and was prepared to hear this case in January, which is the hearing has been canceled because they withdrawn their objection.
Yes, sir. I read here, should the potential resident have one of the following criminal convictions? Right? Not any criminal conviction. What about uh drug convictions that do not rise to the level of felony?
Okay, so a misdemeanor drug conviction would not be a problem. It could pick up. If somebody had possession of marijuana.
All right, but it does leave um uh open other convictions, not uh.
Any misdemeanor conviction, which you knew, except for violence, any nonviolent misdemeanor conviction, yes. It probably couldn't be a drug dealer or have been.
Tell him.
So to be clear, the law, anytime you do anything that you're gonna give drugs to somebody else, becomes a thing, oh, you twenty five them. Please, uh, cheat the law, but you give somebody a gram of anything, don't even charge them, you're not a drug dealer.
And there's also uh certain narcotics sort of scheduling, that just simple possession of it makes it. Like heroin. If I, if you're convicted.
No, my concern was uh one of the following, not any conviction. And that leaves it, does leave it open to other things um besides uh uh anything that lead, rises to a level of felony, but that is still relatively wide uh range of potential conviction.
Not really. Um, I think, again, the idea that it's any other crime of violence, including simple assault, you're kicking out any and all violent. So all this could possibly be is a nonviolent misdemeanor, so uh possession of drugs, low levels of drugs, so really talking about people who have DUIs, uh possessed marijuana, or maybe shoplifting, so. I think everyone's concern would be a violent crime, you know, I think that's what everyone, I mean, not that anyone is thrilled about someone who should, you know, doing shoplifting, you know, our real concern is someone who is potentially violent. So that I think is a significant uh restriction. And I thank you very much, Peter and Tony. Thank you both so much for all your hard work in in negotiating this. I think it's um took a long time, but like you said, I mean, certainly, you know, unlike even potentially with existing group homes that are here, uh that, you know, we don't necessarily have a right to know. Um, you know, backgrounds and stuff like that, if I'm not mistaken, that's not something that.
We're not, we're not we're not analyzing residents here either.
Right.
These overall restrictions are.
So this is, this is, this is very, you know, as you said, this will be one of the safest places in all of them.
And and if I may just add, uh, you know, my concern isn't the fact that people need a place or or even Alden for that matter. It's the proximity of the uh elementary school that I think is our, my main concern. Uh, it, I guess if we're somewhere else on the other side of Alden, I would be less concerned. But the proximity within under a hundred yards of of the elementary school has been concerned.
But it's not a hundred yards of the elementary.
Well, actually, it is.
The property.
Property, yes, correct.
Yes.
But the school, it is not. No, but the property of the school, if you take, if you take if you take the property at where the tennis courts are, and you take the edge of the property there.
Tennis courts that are used as a draw court, right. That, well.
That's not school property.
But the only, if I remember correctly from our previous conversation, the only thing that is federally restricted in that regard is uh sex offenders and say included in weapons. Uh, and there, and that's also included anyway, so.
But I mean, you know, it's 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 my, it's my impression that this house is like the final stage in their treatment, if you will.
Right, it's supposed to be transitional.
Yeah, it's transitional housing, and they're all volunteers.
Right.
You know, it's like these, these are people that volunteered to to participate in this progress, and they they personally.
And they can, they can be removed.
I guess, Mr. Feinberg, I would just say, if you have uh legal advice on how we would be able to restrict this even further, let us know.
Unfortunately, I'm not a lawyer, I have a.
Right, I know. I mean, we we have a lawyer.
Yeah.
Who, you know, took it to the fullest extent possible, you know, I understand your concerns, you know.
But, well, I'm happy that we got what we got, but I would have to say, as council said before, we were not advising this when the county approved it.
Right.
They were not as forthcoming as the final documents when we talked to them in September. Uh, cuz we asked a lot of these questions and they didn't really provide answers. They have now to the best of our ability, so we they're gonna proceed and we have method, and I would say their full packet of material included, they do background checks on all the people that come in, that's how they know what their records are in order to make make sure that they don't they aren't in any of these categories. Uh, anything else, since you're, no, that's it. Uh, you have anything else, Mr. Tartaglia?
I do not, Mr. President, and if it's okay with you, I will leave the meeting.
Uh, just one other update, and I know you were on for John. Do you have anything else to add about how our construction of our initial building is going?
Now, I, so far, I think they've done a good job. We uh we're gonna let them go back to work framing by Monday uh on the uh on the supposition that they will reach the four thousand yield by the twenty eighth day, so I think they're okay. Um, you know, they may have some bumps along the road, but for right now, they're all right.
And you haven't seen an interim report? I know the first one came in about ten days after it was tested. You haven't seen another test that's come through on the foundation, have you?
No, um, that's why I was looking forward to reports that are coming out on Monday.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, appreciate you being available tonight, and if you need to go somewhere, you'll, we will reach you from your gathering, but thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Treasurer Rankin is busy writing away on.
I have a couple of things I have to talk about.
Yeah, she came up with some new reports for us.
Well, number one, um, I would just ask, um, I will not be at the um general meeting on that for January. Thank you. Um, um, so if everybody could have any invoices that were approved um to John by Friday, uh, January tenth, I'd be grateful, so.
That's next Friday, not this Friday.
Not this Friday, the next Friday, but sometimes people get them and they think they're, we'll slip them in under the end, so if we can have them all by Friday, I would be very grateful. Um, we've done all the necessary registrations and depository information involved for the EIT, so hopefully we will start to get you know, some feedback.
You did send the cancel check or fax it to them? Excellent. I know that was the last thing.
That was it, yes. That's how I talked to Jay the other day.
Okay, good.
Everything, made sure we were good shape. Um, I've got a question from one of the residents, which I was not really sure about. Um, they wanted to know what their responsibility is, like, for example, they worked for um in Springfield and now the EIT's gone to Springfield. So if their responsibility to contact their payroll people or will Keystone collections. Take care.
So I can kind of answer that because
Go ahead.
when I moved, it automatically, it automatically went to Willowstown.
Okay.
So once they see that zip code in the system, it will automatically go to
So, so the resident.
Your home base, your hometown.
Themselves, but they don't have to do it. That is wonderful. Okay, so I think that would just be one more thing that, you know.
Although your coworker took it upon herself.
My coworker, yes, she did.
Former treasurer, Charlie Quinn.
She is very comprehensive and does a wonderful job, so she took care of it for me and I'll treasure her stuff for different things.
I mean, I would tell whoever answered that question though.
Yes.
You're gonna see it on your very first check.
Yes.
If you don't see it on there, I would make that phone call.
Okay, yeah.
Because the last thing you want is to go a year and a quarter before they catch it next year at tax time.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, actually, they're already paying it in Springfield.
Yes.
So it just, it would get transferred over.
It should be handled by all of the tax officials.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant, like.
Notice I said should be.
Yes, yeah, so, so, yeah, I mean, I'm in a small office and we just told our boss we couldn't talk to the payroll people. But like, if you work for some big place like Aquila or something like, you don't even mean, that will be taken care of.
My check says it's coming. It's going to Willowstown.
Very good. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, cuz there there was one thing I meant to ask somebody. Sent you the letter about registering with Holcomb? To make sure that we are registered?
Not Holcomb, Keystone Collection.
Our Keystone, I'm sorry, yeah.
We don't want to be registered with Holcomb. We don't want us to be registered with Holcomb. Other people, we'd be very good.
Sorry, uh, but but but, yeah, something about the letter, you know, making sure that we register with Keystone and and everything else.
I think that was if you are an owner of a business or something.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, it 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 was, it wasn't very clear what they were saying.
Well, that's kind of, you know, when I got asked that question, I was of the opinion that they would take care of it, like, it's just good to know that, you know, that that's one less thing that the residents have to worry about, so that's.
A war companies will take care of it automatically.
Very good.
And your other question? You said you had a couple more, that was it? Oh, you have a couple?
Much like, please have your money, your things in, you know. Send all your bills to me.
Is that it for now?
I believe that is.
Okay, we have money in the bank, thank you.
We do, we do, and um we are actually, um, we uh we made our first disbursement to the um construction company last month and um they cashed the check. We have a copy of the check that's given to John.
So we can get, go to the reimbursement, the third or the second reimbursement.
Yeah.
The faster the better.
Yes.
Any questions for the treasurer? Gina, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, chief, other than, do you have anything for us?
Um, uh, the only other thing I have is that um the school bus cameras are supposed to start going live on Monday.
Oh, cool.
So um we have been in contact with the company that the bus patrol that is um posting everything, uh, we are setting up our local account. And uh we will have uh the training for that. And then, once that happens, then we'll be in service.
Good.
Reviewing the footage that they sent to us.
Our momma is just reviewing the footage and saying, yes.
Yeah, that that violation did occur.
Right.
And that it occurred in our jurisdiction.
Gotcha.
So that's pretty much it, unless somebody decides to fight the violation and then goes to court, then we would be officer, we'd have to, unit would have to go and testify. They send a representative from bus patrol.
Do we get compensated for having to send an officer to the, I know we get a small amount of money for reviewing it, but is there any kind of a compensation deal?
No, not really. I mean, it's just like a normal traffic here, so.
Or the new business.
But from what I'm gathering is there aren't a ton of people that fight the violations, so I've spoken with uh Clifton Heights and Upper RV and some other departments. So they don't get an over abundance of people fighting.
Because of their photo, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I.
I was just gonna say, does it go to the vehicle, the person? Does that they using the tag?
Right, they're using the tag, so it goes to to the register, so you may, you know.
I got a ticket for an orange light once. And, you know, they showed like you, like in the privacy, like your phone, like where you are.
Picture.
They give you a lot, that's what I'm saying. Okay, I guess I gotta pay this.
I couldn't deny it, yeah.
Picture, don't lie.
No, they had good pictures.
Yeah, I I got one from uh the Port of Alden. And I was like, they sent me a beautiful picture of the back of, back of my SUV.
Right.
Right, for two dollars and fifty cents. I think they expended more than administrative money.
Yeah, I think it's that picture, yeah.
Yeah, I was like, that was a nice picture, small enough, but.
Anything else?
That's our house, buddy.
Any other questions for the chief? Uh, seeing, uh, we're gonna move the uh to law and ordinance. Clear a couple people need to be sworn in, councilwoman Blunt.
I've been saying this all the time.
I know, I know.
I just tend to know.
I know that they're.
I talked to them both.
Caroline, we wanted you to get the full experience, right?
She missed, why she missed these meetings so much?
Oh, yeah.
Because that's under appointments.
But at least you have to be in fact of the house, right?
All right.
Councilwoman, see, councilwoman.
Hold on, councilwoman Blunt, you're up. We're going, we have a couple people we need to appoint to boards and commissions.
Okay, so first is, I would like to make a motion to appoint Caroline McKernan to the zoning hearing board for a term.
Who's Caroline McKernan?
Um, as, so this term would expire twelve thirty one, twenty twenty six. This is to replace a former hearing board member who moved out of the borough of Alden.
Uh, there's a motion reported to appoint Carolyn, former councilwoman Carolyn McKernan, to the zoning hearing board for a term that ends on twelve thirty one, twenty twenty six. Is there a second to that motion? Councilwoman, might any discussion amongst the council members? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Yeah, I have it. You wanted to do them both together, so.
Yeah, why don't we do it both together?
You are still on the clock.
All right, next, I would like to make a motion to appoint Nicole Wolverton to the vacancy board chair for a term that expires twelve thirty one, twenty twenty five.
There's a motion on the floor to appoint, to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor to appoint, reappoint actually, Nicole Wolverton, uh, chair of the vacancy. Board for a term that ends on twelve thirty one twenty five, statutorily, it's only for years, is there a second to that motion?
One second, I'm just.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those council members in favor, aye, aye, any opposed? So you get the full experience, you get to be sworn in whichever one you'd like to.
So vacancy board chair and, what was it, zoning hearing board, okay. You guys don't mind the word chair.
Are you okay? So. So if you were to say, I in your name, you swear, okay? If I.
Caroline McKernan. I, Nicole Wolverton, you swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the laws and ordinances of the Borough of Alden.
Law and ordinances of the Borough of Alden.
And to perform the duties.
And to perform the duties.
Of my office as, why do you each do it?
Of my office as, uh, vacancy committee chair.
Okay.
And of my office as zoning board member.
Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity.
Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity.
Thank you very much.
No pictures?
Thank you. Every time we went to a new website, you ever free to go. Oh, so our vacancy board chair just came back from a trip to Iceland.
That woman is a jet setter.
Yes, where they give books for Christmas is their, that's what they do.
I respect for the volcanic eruption, by the way.
I thank you both very much for being here tonight, and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, since you're on, Councilwoman, do you have anything else to report?
Nope, that's the usual stuff.
Okay.
Going on.
You wanna do? Well, we're gonna go back.
He just took this, he's gonna need it.
I get to sign my, all right, we, we are moving back to finance, Councilwoman Smythe.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I hope everyone has Ray Howard A, I did, and I have nothing to report.
Although you do have a motion to table and then a motion to approve. Yeah, we probably should make a motion to table.
I make a motion to table the Verizon, um, services until I next move.
There, there's a motion on the floor to, uh, table the motion for, uh, Verizon for municipal services wifi and internet. Mr. Walker will second that, if we discuss any other discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's done, next motion, Madam?
Oh, okay.
That's me.
A motion to approve Dan to Delaware County Tax Collection Committee for Alden Borough.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor to approve the Empiricopio, the Delaware County Tax Collection Committee as our delegate. That's what it's officially called for Alden Borough, this is involving our EIT tax, we have a chance to be represented on the board. Who hires the tax collection agency, which in this case happens to be Keystone. Uh, is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Councilwoman Blunt, any discussion, anybody else wanna serve?
How often do you meet?
We, uh, let, let me get this done and then I'll talk to you, cause I do need an alternate, so we could talk about that later.
Oh, I'm not volunteering.
All those in favor?
Okay, this is DIY.
I, the Empiricopio, do affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Walden Borough of Alden. Form the duties of my office as delegate to the Delaware County Tax Collection Committee for the Borough of Alden with the Delaware solution. Thank you very much.
And there you have it.
So in answer to your question, I was in touch with the chairman of that committee. Who is the, for township manager, and I think of the Trichester or Lower, if I can't remember which one off the top of my head. He's very nice, and the second time I contacted him, he got back to me. I have been trying to be in touch with the solicitor for this committee, they do not have a date yet, so maybe twice a year. And, uh, aside from picking who the solicitor is and who the tax collection person is, and they already have an agreement with Keystone. I don't know what else that they do, uh, they do have the right by its law to be. A hearing board of people appeal, but the gentleman said it in the tenure as a deputy committee, nobody's ever appealed EIT. It's usually handled administratively, whatever, there are glitches, but they usually get taken care of administratively, so. I can't answer anything else, but we do need to have an alternate delegate appointed, so if anybody else is interested, I am talking to some people. And up, keep you updated if they ever get back to you, let's see where and when we meet, I will say that the votes. The votes are weighted by your population and by the amount of money that you collect. So right now, he was telling me that Chester City, because they have a two percent earnings tax, they carry the largest block of votes. At the time I was speaking with him, Upper Darby had not yet lost their court case, so he said, when, once they got on board, they would be probably close to half. Because of the population, you get half of your vote by the population, half by the money. That you collect, and he said, you know, they would probably be the, the biggest with Chester being second, and apparently you need to have. Fifty point one, fifty percent plus one to actually transact any business, and sometimes if Chester doesn't show up, the rest of the people. That are on the committee, although there's many more municipalities, they don't, they don't, they don't come up to fifty percent, so they can't really. Do anything official or actual.
Wow.
Yeah, it's very, but he, well, we're gonna be pretty low because our anticipated eventual revenue would be about four hundred thousand. Uh, if the projections are correct, and with our population of four thousand, you know, we're gonna be on the smaller end of the scale, we gotta weigh your vote. Uh, he did say that there would be additional costs, uh, well, uh, somewhere between three and four hundred dollars a year in order to cover the cost for the solicitor. Because of our share being so small, would be, what, something in those range, he wasn't, he wasn't sure, but he matched us up with another town that collects about the same amount of money. With about the same.
Taxes for taxes.
Well, you know, there's a, you have to pay a solicitor and you got, and, you know, that's just what they got. I knew there would be additional charges, but nobody. Nobody would tell me how much it would cost to be a member of this committee, and he was, and this isn't even a set number, so it could be lower. Depending with all the other people they, that join, so we'll see, once I get it, you have anything else? The law and ordinance, you said, no, we're on our list now, sorry. It went to my head, appointed to another committee, uh, you have anything else, Councilman?
Uh, no, when you do good work, they're gonna keep asking you to do it. I, that's it.
All right, thank you, uh, Public Works, Mr. Borders.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, the only thing really is the, uh, the Magnolia, uh, infiltration bed. Looks like they, they've got, uh, two new inlets installed over there, it's all concreted up and kind of patched up and it's looking good. And waiting for the big dig now.
Yes, it's pretty extensive, it goes, uh, westward.
Yes.
On the south side, from the intersection, about a hundred plus feet up in the street this side.
Right, yeah, that's, uh.
Eventually.
Yeah, that, that'll be interesting when that gets done.
Everything else is all right?
Yeah, so far.
All right. Any other questions for the councilmen, seeing none? Public Health, Councilman Kelly.
Well, it was public. Um, I just have, so I can be at the municipal parking lot Saturday from nine to eleven to. Break the news to the people who did not find out yet that the Boy Scouts have been disbanded.
Oh, that's very nice of you. I'll be up there for a period of time, I have a lot of things to hand out, cause I didn't, I printed a bunch and we didn't give them all out last month.
Okay.
Uh, and I have seen people and I've alerted them, so. John, you.
So off the LED sign and shredding each cycle is, uh, safe.
And the calendar was perfect, of course. And that is.
And when, when are we doing the, when are we doing our shredding and recycling?
The fourth Saturday, whatever that is. And anyone who did not get one, please let me know, because we are keeping track, I, I know, keeping track of the addresses. Because most of the time. I don't wanna blame the mailman, but if he only carries twenty five in his hand and you're the twenty six ounce, you're not getting.
By the way, we, I went and talked to the.
I know you did.
So, let's, let's.
That's why I want all these dates, I want all these addresses.
There was a huge pile on the table in the lobby of the post office, I was really surprised.
Of ours?
I saw one over there, yeah.
Really?
Usually it's Clifton's incident.
What?
There's a pile like that.
I saw one.
It's the picture on the front, everybody wants it.
That's ridiculous, so rather than.
I would rather go up, because I know how many we give them, I know how many we have on our route.
Rather than deliver them, they just, uh, self-service.
Well, some people.
We're paid, so no, that's.
We are, right, that's right, it's every.
When did you guys stop that?
Who here has already gotten the calendar?
My best three weeks ago.
No, 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 I didn't do it for a week, so.
That's weird, but I always, always get it, and.
Yeah, before Christmas.
Yeah, it was before, well, yeah.
There's like a week before Christmas.
Yeah.
Well, mine was closer, and my guy, my guy grabbing.
So I was gone and did not stop mail for like, a week while I was gone, but I've been back for a week, so. And I got, and I got the pile.
Yeah, I believe I'm not, Councilwoman Kelly, anything else?
And that is my report, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Walker, welcome back.
Thank you.
Highway, are we ready for the snows the next?
Oh, I'll get to that, save the drama for the end, uh, so I received a call from a resident, uh, the two hundred block of Marion Ave. About a longstanding hole that she thinks seems to. Yes, a little bit bigger, uh, it looks like it was from a, an old patch job, and it is pretty concave, so I spoke with John about it. And they're just gonna be coming and patching.
I adjusted the last council meeting.
Yeah.
We were gonna do a cold patch on it because it was so long ago, when I looked in the records, I can't even find when, I'm assuming. I was back to twenty twelve, it was done somewhere between twelve and fourteen according to Google Maps. So at this point, you know, we're gonna put a cold patch and we'll see if we can do. A section of Marion on that road resurface program this year.
And it needs it a little bit.
It does.
So it'll, it'll work out, um. Let's see, the, the, the snow, so I didn't know it, but walking next to the building today. Uh, apparently we're supposed to get a little precipitation tomorrow, I think we'll be okay, and then Monday is the uncertain forecast. I've seen anywhere from one to five, uh, and yes, we have salts, we will work with the other surrounding municipalities. Make sure that we are on their routes, uh, but please park on the even side of the, uh. Yeah.
That's also on the LED sign.
Yeah.
But that was today as well.
Oh, you did, okay, perfect, uh, even side of the street, so the clouds can move past, uh, much, much easier. And it is trash day too, so be wary of the trash cans, uh, you know, hopefully they end up back on the street rather than in the street. Uh, that concludes Highway, I did have a question, uh, for you, Peggy. I spoke with, uh, a gentleman, uh, recently on more of a business transaction, and he was asking me about municipals. Uh, and if, he's collecting a lot of RFPs right now, as far as, uh, our financial services. So I was wondering, he was wondering if Alden has submitted any RFPs to the world with Sheriff Bank. And if we are looking to switch at all, cause they have some pretty incredible rates, I've worked exclusively with municipalities.
What's his, what kind of services he provides?
He is, he's with, uh, First Bank. So I have contact information, everything if you want to get in touch with him, but apparently, uh, a lot of people are switching up. So, just wanted to.
Billie does.
That's why, yes, that's, that's true, uh, but.
Let's see what his rates are, and let's see if I can.
I, I have his contact information in the, in the car, I'll bring it in.
Yeah, let's, let them take, let John and take.
Boy, it's charity, can you match?
Yeah, so, anything to save this couple dollars, if I can, a little bit.
It was a little bit more interest in itself, so we're really in the interest of these things.
Have we submitted any RFPs recently, or have we been on the sharing for a place?
Yeah, I'll try a couple years ago, and.
You switched to Sheriff from somebody else?
It was beneficial years ago.
What was that, about ten years ago?
Yeah, just before, I mean, before I was sheriff, so that, yeah, I was on council, probably, yeah, ten, yeah, it was ten, nine, yeah.
Sheriff Bank did have one of the highest interest rates.
Yeah.
Cause I actually went there personally, I did some bonds with them because they're just so high.
But, um, but no, I mean, we're always open.
I'll, I'll put you in contact with the Miami's card in my car, um, so.
I guess our big question would be, do they have like, is it, is it only in one line back, or is it like, do they have a bunch of simple?
They have the.
Yeah.
Where are they?
Yeah.
Uh, his direct, uh, office, that he operates out of is media.
Okay.
Um, but they do have other locations, they're, they're local.
Oh, because I physically have to go to this twice a month.
They do, they have other locations, uh, and they're local to the Del, Delco area.
Where does it first trust?
Uh, First Bank.
First Bank, thanks.
Yeah, so I'll give you the information, so it just was top of mind since I met with them on Tuesday.
Yeah, good, we're always hoping for, we can make some more money.
Councilwoman Walker, I'm sorry to just go off subject, but you guys meet, the rec board meets on the thirteenth.
Yes.
And every other month, the second Monday.
Current rest, okay, yes. So that is updated in the calendar, and since we're speaking about that, uh, record will be meeting, it says seven o'clock here, I have no. Block, um, it says seven thirty in the calendar though, right?
Yes, well, yeah. It says seven o'clock in the calendar.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
That's what I thought you guys want at seven o'clock.
You're right.
What, what do you, what do you prefer?
Seven o'clock's perfect.
I'm not, just literally not to do it in the.
Yeah, seven o'clock is, is great, uh, so we have a, uh, tentative calendar. Um, I don't wanna say it's gonna be finalized or everything, but we'll just move over everything and plan, start planning for our first event, which will be in, in March. And Mr. Feinberg, uh, has joined us on several occasions, so hopefully you can join us next. Absolutely. Well, not next Monday, but the following. Following month, yeah.
And can you let me know as soon as you have for that meeting? Because I think we should be planning for the next Borough, uh, mailer, yeah.
Well, I talked to Joyce today about the fact that. Uh, upcoming Black History Month, so we said she was gonna be in touch with you.
Okay.
And also, we need to do Juneteenth, May.
Yeah, any dates that we're trying to actually put in stone, we're gonna try and iron out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Any questions for the councilmen?
Questions, I think we're good to go.
We're good. I did see, I did see the background, but you had sort of a date you were asking from John, uh, for the breakaway or something?
Yes, that was more on a personal business.
Yeah, and you gotta fill out that page.
I have the application.
I didn't know whether it was some sort of, uh, we should, we should also probably go back to all the people that are currently meeting here. And, and Donna's gonna send you a thing because they're, they're gonna vote this month, but they're probably like coming back for the Rotary group. They found a more suitable location, although they do appreciate all, all the, well, food, food being prepared and served to them. As opposed to having to bring it in, so they liked that a lot better. And we were, we're at the southern end of their service district, and some of the northern end people that are in the group.
Grumbled?
Were grumbling about having to travel so far to get to us down here, so, you know.
Yeah, so some backstreet.
That's true too. Uh, Joyce, you have anything to report for, uh, public safety?
Yes, the, thank you, Mr. President, the, um, for public safety and public health. Councilwoman Kelly and I, um, spoke, and we're gonna be, uh, having a conversation so that we could see how we can coordinate. Those two, um, committees with different, uh, things coming up for this year. And also, um, for council, I'll have the police and the Clifton Heights, uh, reports. And then I have a question for, I guess, this is, um, Council Mayor Michael. For the calendars that are missing, um, I don't know if it would create a bigger situation. Is it possible to put that out to ask residents, uh, if they did not receive a calendar? Or John, do we have enough if they didn't get them?
Stop, I put them in this building, I will be glad to get them one.
Okay. That's my question, is that something to put out, um, mayor?
I sent it today, but I didn't see it today.
So you're, you're asking, you want me to send out an email?
A blast.
I'm saying for the alert or the, for information that you send out for those, I know, um, John's gonna go. You're going to the post office to see if there's still a stack there, John?
Yeah, so I'd like to know why, yeah, right.
Okay.
I was there. And be sure to talk to the postmates soon, say, you know, the mayor came and talked to you, so now you're getting the borough manager. The, the, the heavy.
The man with the hammer.
I think I went there after. Right, talk like that. I think I went there to mail a letter after Mr. Councilman Borders was there. And I saw one sitting on the counter, not a stack, and I was surprised, I thought maybe somebody got it delivered to their PO box.
Mm-hmm.
And they just left. And I was surprised, I thought maybe somebody got it delivered to their PO box, and they just left it sitting there. In the past, Colling, uh, Clifton Heights has a has a similar calendar that they usually leave extra sitting out in that lobby area, so.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm.
It was only one.
What was it, uh, the free newspaper was there, and, and the, and there was a stack of calendars, I think it might have been the day, uh, you know, the day or two before Christmas.
No, I might have.
I think I, yeah, yeah, I think I was looking for, you know.
I was there the Thursday, I think I was there Friday that's week, so.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Anything else, Councilwoman?
I think just that the, um, Mayor and I will be setting up some meetings with, um, Chief Sevillah also, but that comes on, that will come under, you know, our public safety. We'll have further reports, uh, further to report on that in the coming weeks.
Okay.
And that concludes my report, and happy new year, everyone.
Uh, President, so we have planning commission scheduled to meet here next Thursday, the ninth, seven thirty PM. The rec board's gonna meet here the Monday after that, the thirteenth at seven. Council will have a regular meeting here on Wednesday, January fifteenth at seven thirty PM. Uh, any privileges of the floor, Mr. Fiverr?
Yes, um, the Alden Booster Civic Association is starting their new year, one oh one. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, John for how the calendar turned out with the inclusion of the boosters, it looks great. Uh, our, this Saturday, we are dedecorating, uh, Alden. And hopefully, uh, we'll get enough people, I'll, I'll send out an email tonight, uh, to, uh, to accomplish all of that. Uh, the, uh, on the eighth of, uh, which is this coming Wednesday, it will be our first, uh, meeting of the year, which is our board meeting. Uh, and the twenty second, more importantly, will be our general meeting. I wanna tell everyone to look out for the boosters this year. We're always around. Uh, if you see one, uh, you know, ask on how to join, because, uh, we would love to have you as a member. And, and, Marlene, and, uh.
So you're really only talking to Steve, me, Peter, and.
Right, right.
Scott, because these guys are already members.
I can relax those in my ears.
Yeah. It's directed to Osborn.
Any males eighteen and older, uh, are welcome to come. And by the way, uh, John, you've been a member, so.
Yep.
Uh, you know, we, we, we plan on doing a lot of great things this year, and, um, I enjoy my time with the boosters. We are all proud to, uh, serve Alden as a community, and, like, as I said, keep an eye out for us, and we'll be seeing.
And just as an FYI.
Yes.
If you're doing your budgeting for this year for the boosters, we have a new telephone pole that we just installed by the gazebo on the north side of the street, so if you're gonna be looking to put another flag up.
We've already discussed it, however, there's gonna be a line coming down with a, uh, there's gonna be a line coming down.
Don't use some apple pole?
So we'll have to take a look at that situation once it's completed, but that's already been discussed. And we did have a very successful aid to Santa on Christmas morning, so you're certainly with that. And I, it's, Hanukkah was over as of sunset today, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, uh, the belated happy Hanukkah.
Oh, and, yeah, uh, speaking of, uh, Santa, I, uh, I heard, he was great, Vina, he had a wonderful time. Very grateful, very, very grateful.
Uh, anything else? Gina, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the most.
Counsel, one, second to my Councilman Borders, I thank everybody for being here tonight. All those in favor?
All right.